I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I open, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak on something that isn't already on the agenda? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. We're going to start off with the ADA compliance at PD and Justice Hall, and then we're going to move to the outdoor assembly permit depending on Marielle and Ada Pietro's accessibility. She has to be put on first, but we had already had that request for first place for Pam. So, yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to get started with Mary Stan.
So, just to kind of give a little back history before we move forward, the town has been working on, at least still looking at ADA compliance, well over five years. We had a consultant come out and review some of our buildings, and it's not just structural ADA compliances, there are other ADA compliances, whether hearing impaired, visually impaired, website. But some of the things that we've been looking at in the last five years are compliance with structural limitations. And one of those happened to be the police department. So, in fact, in 2023, we gave a presentation to the then-town board of some of the work that Aunt Pausa Silla has done for us in looking at meeting those compliance limitations at the police department. And we presented an overview then, and we're going to re-present that today, just to bring us up to speed. But the then-town board also wanted to look at Justice Court and felt that a combined approach of the two buildings might be a better way to consider funding for that. So, we've used a combination of grant funding from CDBG, right, community development block grant funding, and tax dollars to pay for Pam to do design work both at the police department and at Justice Court. And with us today are both justices, Stamper, Balm, and Mary Faith Westerville. And they've worked with us on the Justice Court side, and Pam can tie that in. And largely today is going to be a first brush of the plans for them, too. Those plans, while they're broad in concept, and there could be some internal concerns, but those can be adjusted. I think the focus today is to give this board a feel for where we're at on the two buildings, both the police department and the Justice Court, and then look ultimately at the end of costs, which Joe's going to tie the costs back into play, and then defer to the board for where do we go moving forward. But I will say, historically, this has been a long, long project. I shared with Christine. Christine, can you do that first one that I showed up?
Okay.
Yeah, just the one that has the original design. Right. So, this was drawn up in 1968, right? We found this upstairs in the then-town hall and now the police department. And the front of that picture is the police department. And the back was a vision for possibly some type of combined services that we could use. And this might not be that far off from something that we might want to consider today going forward. But I just wanted to share with the board again that if you look at the data on that, it's 1968. So, the board then realized that they had probably space limitations. Some of those limitations have been addressed with the adding of this building. But our facilitation for those in a largely senior community for ADA compliance is limited, especially when it comes to us over at PD. And then ultimately, any clients we have will end up in Justice Court. So, with all that said, I'm going to turn it over to Pam. Pam's going to give an overview of the work she's done, both at PD and then Justice Court. Now, we're going to go to Joe to talk about some costs and then go back to the board. Thank you.
Didn't bother anybody if I put these over here. It's easier for me to point to things because like that.
Yeah, Pam.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Hopefully. Blocking anybody's view? Work for everybody?
Yeah, Christine, you can put it up on the screen. Okay, good. Perfect. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank everybody here. Now, this is the Aunt Pam Pausa Silla, Pausa Silla Brown Architects. I've been working with Chief Reed and Joe over the past few years, and actually, on these buildings, way longer ago than that. So, I'm quite familiar with them. I'm asked today to just review the plans with you. And obviously, I think you all know the buildings. They're quite challenging as they exist now. They were built in a time when ADA was not even thought about, handicap access was not thought about. So, there are some challenges because of the multi-levels that exist, not only within the building, but also just even entering the buildings. So, I'm going to start with the police station. And the needs here were twofold. One was to address issues with suspects or prisoners that needed to be brought into the police station. And this project is much less complex than Justice Hall because we weren't really looking to expand any spatial. We didn't need to expand anything spatially. We just need to get people in and have them use the building. So, the easy part of this was the fact that we have an existing ramp for the cars to go down, and we can create a level here, level space here, to bring a suspect into the building. And the facilities that we're trying to accommodate there were an interview room where somebody be interviewed by the police and/or fingerprinted, an office space, which is... Oh, sorry. Sorry. It's okay. An office space, which is immediately adjacent to that. We provided large pocket doors so that when the interview room is not being used, whichever suspect is the majority of the time, this can be used as overflow space, workspace, direct access in for other staff members, and then, of course, a handicapped bathroom down there for a suspect that might be in the interview room. The rest of the building is remaining unchanged. It has its own issues with multiple floor levels, but that's where the jail cells are and other facilities. We don't need to change that because I believe Chief Reed has an agreement with the county that any suspect that would be handicapped can be taken there to their facility for holding. So, on the lower level, everything's sort of happening here within this back space, and it's all existing. We're just reorganizing and redesigning. The second portion of this project has to do with the public and/or a town employee for the police station that needs to have handicap access. We didn't want to use up any real estate, if you will, within the existing building. So, it seemed like the best approach for this project was to create an outside ramp to bring one up to the main level of the police station. These ramps to meet ADA compliance have to be extremely long. They're not very welcoming to somebody to use. So, what we tried to do was, well, first of all, you have to break it up into sections, but we created sections of ramp that wrap around a garden or courtyard area so that it would be pleasant to look at and also pleasant to, excuse me, to access the building. So, one would come up the ramp from the front parking area and enter the police station from the side into what is now, as you probably all remember, when Dottie Ogar was the town clerk 100 years ago, she had an office with a vault. That space is currently not being used by the police station, and so that seemed to us to be found space. So, we created a lobby space where one could come in, go to a window to communicate with the clerk, and/or be buzzed into the inner sanctuary of the police station. And then also, we've provided a, excuse me, an ADA compliant bathroom off of that lobby. So, a couple of renderings just to show you what it would look like, the ramp coming up with that garden space and the side entry into the police station. Just others. Look at more of a bird's eye view so you can see what that looks like. And then lastly, just the work that would be done down here is more doorways and windows down that existing ramp. So, that's the police station. Anything else I'd need to add? Now, the Justice Hall is a little bit more complex because, one, we can't give up real estate within the building, and there's really no way to provide the spaces that we need for lifts and bathrooms, et cetera. So, the solution here that was best to consider was an addition to the existing building. And just to orient yourself, this is the Thomas Street side. So, I'm starting at the lower level, which probably is not the best place to start, but well, let me flip to the first one. So, here, what we've done is create a lobby space that is entered at grade level. So, that immediately takes away handicap issues. One can come in. We've created a lobby because now we have more concerns than we did in 1968 of security and those sorts of things. So, unlike how the police station, the Justice Hall operates now, with a metal detector on the outside of the building and no place to really meet or greet, this lobby will serve those purposes. It will give the police the metal detection equipment that they have, and then a lobby for people to mill around before court starts. We have a lift that will take one up to the courthouse level or down half a flight to the basement level. And there are also stairs, one leading up, one leading down. That provides also some additional space, and you'll see that I've had this shaded. That shading represents the addition to the building, an expansion of the existing clerk's office, because there are times when the clerk's office needs to be open, people don't need, can't walk through the courthouse. So, now they can quickly come up and talk at the window to the court clerk. On the lower level, in this addition, we're able to provide the lift going down, the stair going down, provide the ADA bathroom requirements. As long as we're on this level, we're also proposing to add on the chase bank side, the north side of the building. And on the lower level, that would provide for an expanded or future police command center. They have some facility down here already, but this would give them much more space to operate. So, that's on the lower level.
I'd say a continuity of operations requirement that we have, that if our current building failed, that we could continue to operate with radio. So, we have redundancy in radios in that room right now and some other interconnectivity with web-based stuff, but largely communications are down there. So, that's, I think you're replicating that or continuing that.
Yes, and expanding. So, the addition on the north side, we're proposing to give the judges their own office. You have to share, but they're not sharing with four people, two clerks, two judges. They would have their own office here with an ADA bathroom that would service all of the court staff, not the public. It gives them, directly from their chambers, a ramp up to the bench, which is always at a raised level, and that poses a problem, as Mary Faith found out last year. Just to get to the bench level was an issue. So, if a judge is handicapped, they can directly access the bench without any issues. It also provides for immediate egress for emergency and fire, and a ramp down here to accommodate that situation. The existing judges' chambers can now be converted to a jury room for deliberation and a small meeting space for attorney-client conferences. And then the rest is really utilizing the existing courtroom, reconfiguring it. We haven't ironed out all the issues there yet, but maintaining the courtroom with some expansion for the judges' bench. And the goal in both of these projects is obviously to work within the existing character and style of the existing buildings that are sort of iconic to Shelter Island or Main Street, if you will. And so, this image shows the existing front entrance with the addition off of the Thomas Street side with that on-grade entry over here. And then you get a glimpse of the other addition on the north side over there, a little bit better view of it here. So, the building becomes very symmetrical in terms of the two additions. So, in brief, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Joe for financial discussions.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
I want to address some of it at some point.
Before I get to the bottom line, I think everybody's hearing from me. I wanted to just emphasize a few key parameters that drove the decision-making for this project. The first dates back several years when we engaged with accessibility consultants to identify where our town facilities were lacking in terms of compliance, but also provided us with a list of non-compliance and preferred upgrades, facility by facility. So, we use that as guidelines for where to allocate our resources in the next few years. We've made improvements since then on facilities like the community center and Allegiant Hall. We've also made smaller improvements to the town hall facility, but the improvements range from things like improved signage to railings, things that maybe aren't so clear to the public, but that have been systematically knocked off that list from the consulting. As we move to these particular projects, the Justice Court and the police department, the effort and improvement scale is much larger, as you see from today. But that's largely based on a concept and approach that these are both iconic buildings for the town, historical buildings, but also ones that we see in use in perpetuity for their current functionality. Justice Court will continue to serve as, as Justice Court and the police department for, for the police department. We've invested heavily in architectural services to make sure that any improvements to those buildings match the overall character of the community and also can provide permanent accessibility improvements. There are options to provide, you know, temporary ramps, aluminum-style ramps that can be installed for periods of time or removed. Those are all options that could have been considered for places like Justice Court, where you may rarely have a need for those types of accessibility solutions. But that was not the approach that we took as part of this project. We were looking for permanent solutions that would enhance these buildings under the mindset that folks in our community don't necessarily have to have a permanent handicap, like being, you know, indefinitely wheelchair-bound to need these things. We have a growing senior population. We have folks who are dealing with injuries that may temporarily restrict their ability to get to work or to use some of these services. So, our designs revolve around those types of permanent solutions. To get straight to the bottom-line part that everybody was asking for, the improvements that you saw today at the police department, or the ramp and the interior arrangements would be approximately $450,000, and the Justice Court additions, interior and exterior improvements would be approximately $1.25 million. Those prices include the markups or escalations above traditional labor rates to include prevailing wage prices, but they do not include price inflations that we would normally see for federal or state grants, like minority business requirements or Buy American material requirements. So, if we were to pursue funding for these projects through outside grants, it's likely that there would be additional stipulations that would further inflate the price on the project. And those are all values of today's, today's, 2025.
Bear of bad news, huh?
Pam, can you tie in a little bit on the reflection back? Because I remember when then-supervisor Art Williams was here, you did similar drawings, and then maybe not to this extent that...
Yeah, I think really...
We've been in this, you know, that's at least 20 years ago. I think it was 2003 when you did your original design plans.
Well, first, we did nothing for the police department at all.
Right, it was just...
And then in Justice Hall was just a lobby with a lift to get you up to the two levels and/or up and down, and a bathroom. That was it. There was no consideration for expanding the building to meet today's needs or security issues or anything like that.
Joe, what time, when did the consultants enter into this equation?
The accessibility consultants?
Well, you mentioned that you were working with a consultant, or he looked at the needs and so forth?
Right. In 2020, the town engaged with an accessibility consultant to review all of their town facilities for ADA compliance. We subsequently engaged with Pam approximately two years ago to start this work specifically at the Justice Court and the police department. So, those are the two outside consultants that have been involved in all of these accessibility things.
So, the consultant was for ADA, and then I guess Pam, you worked with the needs of the community and tried to fit it into your project, the scope of your project. And that was back in '23, or has that been revised since that time?
I think we started around 22, 23.
23?
Yep.
Okay. And is this information or this drawing and your architectural drawings, is this from that period of time, or is it something current now?
It's evolved over that period of time. We began the work, it takes time to develop it.
You've been dealing with this a long time.
And way longer than that, yes. But the current situation is 2023.
So, this is really current as a scope of 2025? We got our needs assessment done, we know what ADA compliant is, so we're pretty much up to speed with that.
Yes, and it will evolve further should the, you know, should this go forward, because we still need to work internally with the judges, et cetera. This is a basic concept of how we would approach the two projects.
And Joe, just to review, the budget estimating you're getting into is the police station was $450,000, and the Justice Hall, you're estimating approximately 1.2?
That's right.
Okay, got it.
That's right. And that is, those numbers are specific to the task and the scope of the facilities. It doesn't include ancillary changes like well relocation, septic upgrades, any of those other things. It's only with regard to the ADA scope items that you saw in the drawing.
Got it.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Any from the public?
I think one thing we would like to say, thank you very much.
You can come up and state your name for the record.
Mary Faith Westerville, Town Justice. And first of all, thank you so much for all of your hard work. And we recognize that we are not ADA compliant at the moment, and that has caused us issues, including for me personally, when I broke my leg two years ago and getting in and out of the courthouse was almost impossible. And I couldn't use the restroom because it was downstairs and I couldn't get there. So, it's really important for us to have the ADA compliance. Security is also a major issue for us, and we have, from your court system, a security audit that was done of the building, and we've provided that to Joe. So, that's been taken into consideration as well. So, that's really important to us because right now, we've been able to get the magnetometer, but it's outdoors, it causes issues. And for anyone who's been to the courthouse, you walk straight in and you're in the courtroom. There is absolutely no place to go other than that. And for us, chambers is in the back. If we need to leave, we have to walk through the courtroom, or if we arrive while court is in session. So, and we do share the two clerks, the two judges, we share the facilities, and that becomes very difficult. So, in the new plan, it's great that we have the judges and the clerks separated, that we're ADA compliant, that's all great. There are some things that we will want to talk to Pam about, particularly from when I looked at the plan, the design of the courtroom itself. The way it's set up right now is the way most courtrooms are set up, and the clerk needs to be right next to the judge as part of the judges' bench, because that's a very interactive thing. When you're having court, you're talking to the clerk, they're coming up with paperwork, they're handing it to you, you're signing it, you're giving it back to them. So, those kinds of things, we would really want to talk to you about. Yeah, but I know that we're not doing that right now, so that's okay. So, but I think those are the specific comments that I have, I don't know if it's worth it, I have some comments.
When you finish.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chief Reed, Joe, Pam, I want to thank you for your work and the time you've put into this. I think it's been over and above, and it's been ongoing and evolving, and thank you for all you do. I think Mary Faith said it eloquently. The only thing I wanted to add is, I'm always concerned first and foremost with staff and the public. And when I say that, security, and Mary Faith mentioned that very well. We have one magnetometer down. Pam, when we spoke about a lower level, does that mean we're going to have two entrances and exits or just one?
Just, you have the one, your original entrance that you have now, but we're going to have that more as just a fire exit, you know, with the panic bars on it. Nobody will be coming into the courthouse where they're coming currently. The entry to the facility will be from that side entry through Thomas Street, and that is the only entry, other than the door that I've provided at the judges' chambers for fire, and, you know, you want to make a quick exit.
I don't want to belabor this. Yeah, but I don't want to belabor this because it's evolving and it's been wonderful, and we'll have a chance to talk about the design. But I remember, Amber, you were there, Chief was there, Joe, Pam, myself, Mary Faith, and I think Claudine, prior clerk was there. And one of the things that I think, Amber, struck you is, we were saying about the size of the desk in front, that it was too small. And we took out a ruler, and we were looking for space, and that stuck with me. We need to sit down also when, now's not the time, and it's inappropriate, I think, but to sit down and make sure that there's enough interior space, which we'll do. I took one of my court clerks today, and before we came here, and I said, "Look, you're new, you just started, and I have some input. I'm not so self-important, I want to know what works for you." And I took a look at her space, and it's small, and it's tiny for a court clerk. And that's something that we'll need to discuss in our webinar for another day and just say thank you for all, Joe.
Okay, very well.
Anyone else in the fiscal audience? Anyone on Zoom with questions?
Yeah, most of this design looks like it was really from that period of time going back to '23. I mean, you modified, you changed, or it's changed a little bit, but it looks like a lot of this has really remained the same?
The police station, I mean, that's been on the shelf for a while.
Right.
The Justice Court, we haven't worked on most recent future, or past. It's been sitting, waiting for things to happen. So, you know, we did our initial, we've gone back. Listen, our... Listen, architecture is a, a process and you present ideas, you get feedback and it evolves and they will continue to evolve. So I haven't done anything in the last few months, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I didn't see any hands go up on Zoom. So I think what our next steps should be that the, this, especially the cost analysis, needs to go back to capital planning and grants committee and start to work with our grants writer to see whether or not, you know, if there's any, you know, availability for funding, if no funding is available, you know, bonding, what would that entail? And do a cost benefit analysis on how we want to move forward on this. So does that sound like a good plan for the town board?
Yeah.
Does this play into that needs assessment? I know, I know you were talking about doing a little needs assessment. Would, would this delay all be part of?
I think it would be part of. So we would give this to them, to the firm that we select to do the needs assessment, just them take a look at it and as they're looking at the broader town needs, whether or not this fits in or if they have suggestions for modifications.
To be honest, I, I thought the police station was a much more expensive modification to accommodate. Okay, but it, it, has it always remained at that level? I mean, that hasn't changed much. I just, this is the first time I'm hearing the dollar amount of four, you know, $450,000, okay?
Yeah, that's the first dollar amount that we, we've come up with. We, we haven't done a, we haven't gotten it to the point where we had a full design where we could actually work off a design to do a cost up. So the original one was more drawings as opposed to actual, some of the design work you did that we can do an actual cost up. So my other point to that would be too, that I would ask Joe, would, would septic or any other water related things be connected to this? And if not, it shouldn't inhibit those things from occurring to the building.
Right, that's right. The, the police department modifications would not necessitate septic improvements or increase the design flow because we're not adding any square footage to the building or changing, changing its functionality in any meaningful way. The well just happens to be in conflict with where the ramp is located, as are some other utilities like propane. So those would have to be relocated, not because of compliance related issues, just because of space constraints. The Justice Court, however, it's a different story.
Yeah.
And that would require a new enhanced septic and well relocation as well.
My suggestion is you move forward, as you're moving forward on the septic, to kind of take into account this. And even if it changes as we move forward, at least we've kind of spaced out and, you know, like we, right now, we've got two additions going on to the side of Justice Court. So factor that in as you're working on the septic, what, you know, variances that are needed and things like that.
Yes, this, yes. So the Justice Court actually, this particular plan would require variances because of setback and I think a lot, lot coverage also. Nonetheless, there will be a need to go to zoning board for the, for the, for the Justice Court plan. But we had previously discussed the Justice Court and the Police Department as being, you know, I, I think I may have even said, quote, term key for the septic improvements. But if the board is considering particularly the Justice Court project here, that would make septic improvements at Justice Court very challenging to prepare for without understanding more precisely what the, what this ADA project would mean for that property because of the size of the addition. I don't know that I could proceed reasonably at the Justice Court with septic improvements today if this was a project that was seriously being considered for the, for the Justice Court because of the scale. We can plan, we can plan for those types of things, but the space constraints in particular would be very challenging for citing. Mostly, I think, because if you were to go to Health Department today, say, I wanted to improve this system, but I want to put it in this place that's completely not expected or not needed based off the current layout of the structure, there would likely be resistance from permitting standpoint in the absence of any real plans to say, well, we're going to make this change to the, to the building. For instance, there's not a lot of space left on the property with those additions. So you'd be asking to put septic perhaps too close to the street or under something that wouldn't normally be permitted. And then you'd be doing it at the same time that there's no actual other renovation plan for that. So that would be, that would be a complication.
Could you do a shared septic on a lot of property?
You could, but again, that'd be the type of thing you really want to have expanded plans for before you invested, invested in.
Because you're also going to be crossing the road with the sanitary line. So you need to make sure that the Health Department's on board with that.
I'm sorry, I can't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just saying that if you were going to combine the Justice Court and the PD in one septic system, that waistline has to go under the road. So the Health Department would have a, it might be complicated.
Yeah.
Can you kind of start to talk to the, talk to the Health Department to sort of find out what their thinking is and how, how we should proceed?
Yes, definitely. That would, that would likely be the next best step is to engage with the regulators directly. But I think everybody can see how we have to start to narrow our, our intentions for the facilities before we can make serious progress on the infrastructure. The infrastructure is exclusively informed by what it's serving. So we have to know what that is before we can do things like finalize the design or actually submit a permit application. None of those things can happen formally if we don't understand what the design criteria are.
I know in order to do, to get the grants that we got for the design work, we do, we did have to pull like demographic information for the CDBG grants. So I think we should continue to pull that information. We'll work with Barbara so that way if we're going to pursue bigger ADA grants, they too will probably want to know, like, what's the usage needs of each building? Just to assess cost benefit.
Right.
Police Department was very attractive to them. It turns out it's our like second most visited facility by the public for administrative things, not, not because of criminal activity. But it turned out that, you know, the number of people who are visiting for paperwork or records is actually quite significant. And that was the reason for the support for the community block grant was that enhancing public access to the main area, the non-criminal area, was, was a great benefit to the community. And, and the data demonstrated that by a number of visitors.
It's probably also our greatest cost will be is the public area of the upstairs, not necessarily downstairs.
Overwhelmingly, it's, it's not.
Of course, the project is upset.
The, the driver, the cost driver on the project is enhancing the public access through the ramp and lobby rearrangement rather than the restricted area improvements for, you know, people of interest. I would say it's maybe as much as, you know, 90%, 10% the imbalance.
So Joe, what do you, what do you need to move forward? What, what, I mean, I got a concept of what you're looking for and it's been obviously old. So how do we move this puppy forward?
We've now complicated, I think, the town board's priorities because we had finally coalesced on a strategy for septic improvements at these facilities. And admittedly, I was the one who lobbied the board and said, work on these two buildings if you want to get something done in the short term. The Justice Court ADA project is substantial and I've spoke before about how to, to meet ADA goals, it's going to be expensive and it's going to warrant a conversation about what else can we use this building for if we're going to invest in it so heavily. So that sort of plays into, I think, the need for the larger facilities master plan, which was a discussion that we had a few weeks ago. And the board was on the same page about advancing that effort. So we're doing that. When you said, what can we do to move forward? That's something that's happening and we should do to move forward. So we don't need anything else with that. I actually have the RFP completed to share with you shortly. I wanted to get this out of the way first. But where we can move forward on the septic, I think, is now even a little bit narrower if you're entertaining this Justice Court improvement. If you're not entertaining it, then we can continue moving that septic improvement plan forward based on how the building is today. If you are entertaining it, then I think our septic plan in the short term really gets restricted to the Police Department. And this plan with the, with the ramp and internal improvements is something that I can very easily incorporate into the septic improvement program there. There is other space that can be used and we are very confident with this layout. The ramp can't really change in size or location. So we can plan around that now and move forward with the septic improvements at Police Department. I would just hesitate to invest resources in Justice Court if there is, if there is an intention in advancing the ADA project.
So back to capital planning and grants to work on whether.
Well, there's, it's just that we've split now into like three projects. Now we've introduced the third effort, which is ADA enhancement. We were talking about septic improvements. And then we also have the master plan and they all in many ways tie into each other, but it's becoming a little bit iterative as to where to go first.
It sounds to me like we need the facility master plan first because with both of these projects, no matter what, we have to move wells, right? PD, we have to move the well because the ramp design is in the same location as the existing well. So once we go to try to move the well, we're going to have to become compliant with our setbacks, which is going to trigger other things. So I think before we really dive into either one of these rather large projects, we need to understand what we're doing with all of our buildings and how we can make all the puzzle pieces work together. So I do think it brings us back to the facility master plan and keeping these on the table as part of that plan as options and see how it all plays out when we look at everything.
Did we hire a vendor?
Well, Joe has the RFP to go out to hire a vendor.
I produced the RFP and part of the RFP in my last presentation was emphasis on programming.
Right.
So that we could, we could systematically lay out and evaluate all of the town's services and where they are hosted, who they cater to and what their facility needs would be. And that's largely, I think, how you formulate your facilities plan is understanding what services you offer and what the needs of those services are so you can find a space for, for those things. That's included in the R, in the RFP.
So I'm just trying to, I, I like a timeline, right? So in my mind's eye, when, when do you see this facility master plan, us hiring a vendor and say, you know, coming back with advice? Is that a year out?
I think it would be faster than that.
Right, I was going to say you wanted, you just earlier said you want to present to the board the RFQ or RFP so we can get it out.
We've already discussed the, your input. So I, I compiled that into a, what I would call a draft RFP. So if the town, and I'll, and I'll share that with you, you know, this week, if the town board is comfortable with that, then we can advertise that. We could have someone, I think, secured and perhaps even beginning this work before the end of the year. The funds are already available to do that.
So I think that's one step that we need to move forward with in that timeline. I also think that we could talk to the grant writer about funding opportunities, whether or not it's even feasible to get outside funding for this. And if, you know, depending on what that, where that conversation goes or alongside, crunch the numbers to see what bonding would look like. Or if we have, we have very little, you know, town funding available for a project like this. So it would have to be something that would have to be bonding, I think. So we can look at that to see whether or not, like, what the cost of that would be, timeline on that and whether or not the town has the stomach to move forward on, you know, 1.2 million for Justice Court, 450,000 for PD. So I think then we'll know sooner whether or not we're going to even try and move forward on some of this stuff or if we have to start to work on some, you know, ramps and things like that and do more Band-Aid type fixes in the short term. And then that will give you at least some sense of how to move forward on the IA systems.
I think also part of it, you know, the, the price for PD, if that's just the building alone, you do have to incorporate the well and the sanitary system and the overall cost because they're going to have to happen in order to do the construction or at least at the very least the well. But I think once you do that, then you're going to have to address the sanitary system. So I do think those need to be incorporated into the cost of the project, which will drive it up a little bit.
We have funding for that in the 1.25 million.
Depending on the final plan that we present to use that grant for. And that's kind of contingent upon the facility plan and what the overall plan is because it doesn't make sense to only use 200,000 of a 1.25 million dollar grant to just upgrade PD. So, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm thinking it's not going to be the only building.
Right, but we have to have the full plan to present for the grant money. So we need to look beyond just the PD, otherwise. So back to facility master planning.
Joe, I think, I think it's a really a priority. I think this, to get this thing moving so we don't let another three years go by and then we look at, sit down at the table and we look and say, hey, what did we do? So I think this assessment thing should be done. We put it on the table so we, everybody, the public, everybody knows exactly what's involved, okay? I think that should be our, I'm not, I'm not saying number one priority, but it is a, a significant priority to clean up our own buildings with its waste and obviously accomplish the issues of ADA compliant, okay? And I think it looks like you have a lot of stuff that's already been done. I think it's just a question of moving forward and, and putting a fire under it and let's, let's get to a conclusion, you know? Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Anyone else on this topic? Thank you. As I stated earlier, we're going to.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to mix up the order of the agenda because I see Mary Ellen in the heat of this year for the outdoor assembly for the 5K one. This is slated to occur on Saturday, October 18th. This is right around the corner. And you want to, since you're here, Mary Ellen, do you want to?
You might as well.
60 years of the race. And over the years, the race has basically been able to come and put the police department in the highway, the fire, we've kind of condensed it into almost an automatic plan that's come in the last few years. The race provides between 40 and $45,000, split mainly between the Norfolk Breast Coalition and the Coalition for Women's Cancer in Southampton. And Lucius Angels is where our rabble money goes. So it's usually about 4,000 for them. The Lucius Angels does end stage patients and end stage families, any assistance we can provide for them. The Norfolk and the Coalition for Women's Cancer, we divided up years ago so that wherever the Shelter Island community wants to feel comfortable using, they, the money goes to both so they can use whatever money we facilitate. The South Fork has, the Coalition for Women's Cancer on South Fork has put the money into the spa weekend for women. So women who are going through the treatment process can enjoy a spa weekend at the resort of, I think it's Wading River, I don't think it's right. And Norfolk is mostly into their patient care and their wellness and their massaging and their lymphedema patients. So it's a very, obviously breast cancer is not decreasing. It's remained, you know, it's actually climbing. And so we feel this is very important. Run this year, the course has been the same throughout the 26 years. The sunrise is extending to separate small shuttle buses. One to Greenport, well, it'll be on Shelter Island, the Greenport Ferry area, South Ferry will have one as well to shuttle so we can, you know, keep the cars down. shuttle so we can, you know, keep the cars down that are coming to the island and also provide people with an easier route. You know, people are thinking, there's a lot of races going on now, and the ferries are expensive, so they give us a discount and take advantage of that for both ferries. Really, no difference. The highway department picks up, we have the free barbecue, so they pick up, on that Saturday, they'll pick up all the garbage, so it's not strong over everything. We usually clean up, I say better than when we find it, you know, but, you know, the only thing that we might have to ask for is a tent if the weather gets bad. And that's, will be weather dependent that week, you know, to see what's going on. Other than that, we use the Sunset Beach parking lot. You know, we try to make it as simple as a race, a 5K can be. The road closures, I guess, you know, will be the police department and then it's always the same. And we try to make it quick. So the race starts doing the registration at 9:00 AM. We're usually down there between 8:00, 8:30, 9:00, and we try to have everyone gone by 1:00.
Yeah, both highway and PD have weighed in. They have no problems with this. It's routine at this point. They all know what they're doing, and so there are no concerns or complications there. So.
They do a great job every year. It's a simple thing for us. I said in my comments, I don't see any reason.
Yes. And you request a noise exemption just because you've got the sound system for the announcing?
Right.
Just so people understand that it's.
And Amber, you have the course map, so.
Yeah.
I've never had a noise.
No.
You never know.
Never say no.
Yeah.
I have no concerns with this application.
It's a great event.
Okay.
Any questions from the public? Anyone on Zoom? We have a special meeting scheduled at the end of this work session.
Okay.
Prove it so that.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're good to go.
Thank you, guys.
And going back to the order of the agenda, Waterways, we have three sets of procedures to review. We have proposed mooring waiting list procedure. We have the Condon Creek Town Doc waiting list procedure and the Condon Creek Town Doc permit rules and regulations. Beau, thank you for letting us bump you a little bit.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry I missed a discussion a couple weeks ago. There was a couple of questions that sort of were floating around, and I got a copy of one of these with some input from the town board, which I didn't realize until this morning that I was being asked to include that into this prior to this conversation. So I apologize for getting that to you just this morning rather than yesterday or a couple days ago. If we want to just start, just going off of the agenda, the first one on there was proposed mooring waitlist procedure. For anybody who doesn't know, the town code, chapter 90, provides for a waitlist for our gridded and otherwise organized mooring areas, whether they're traditional moorings or stinking pulleys, they're all kind of included in that same bunch of areas. When those areas are full, town code tells us we're going to have a waitlist. We've had waitlists for years and years and years and years. And in the past couple of years, working with the town clerk's office and WMA City, we're just trying to sort of organize all that, standardize that. You guys probably know by now, I'm real big on institutionalizing things so that way we have sort of, this is the way that we do business. It helps us be a little more equitable and I'm big on continuity of things. So if the next marine patrol officer comes in or whoever the next people that are in charge of things, they don't have to reinvent the wheel or guess or call people retired members at home. So that's sort of the context for trying to do this, right? This is the document that you have there. It's functionally the same document you had a couple weeks ago. The gray highlighted areas, there's only a few of them, are the town board's input that I've included into this document based on what I was told was discussed last time. So namely, that is the introduction of a $20 application fee to go on a waitlist. Currently, although there are waitlists for several areas, only Dering Harbor charges, we only, sorry, we only charge a fee to go on Dering Harbors. So this would represent a change in how we're doing business, right? By collecting an application fee for the initial joining of the waitlist and then additionally charging a $20 fee annually thereafter to remain on the list. So that, those are two things that would be different moving forward. As we do with the actual mooring permits themselves, the town board has been clear on this several different times. We forward any fees that we would otherwise pay for the administration through online moorings, the records management system that we use for moorings, we push those fees to the user so that way we wind up, the town winds up netting the full fee amount. So this particular circumstance, online moorings charges $7 per application. That is our, that's the standard fee for everything that we do with them. Doesn't matter if you have one application or 100 applications, it's $7 per application. So the total amount due to the applicant would be $27 in this particular circumstance. I did not list the $7 fee as an actual dollar amount. I'd rather, I just put it in there as whatever the fees are so that way, because as we know, nothing stays the same forever. It's going to change. Rather than coming back in and recreating this document and going that way, I thought we could be a little more forward looking and encompassing with that. Any questions about those two changes that reflects what the town board's intent was?
Yes, I just, I want to like open it up, like, let's stop, pause on this one before you move to the next one, just so that we can maybe put each one of these to bed.
Love it.
Fine. My one question for the town board is, so joining the waitlist, $20 application fee. And then I'm wondering about maintaining your position, like, $20 to have, you know, while you're on a waitlist. If you're paying the administrative fee, then at least it makes you go online and confirm that you want to stay on the waiting list. You're paying whatever the administrative fee is, do we want to charge the $20 to stay on a waiting list? And, you know, I don't, how many years can somebody be, you know, might someone be on the waiting list?
Well, since we're talking about.
Generation.
Well, separate moorings.
Separate moorings.
Separate, yes.
We had a fair amount of turnover, most of those waitlists, Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of those waitlists are fairly short now with the exception of Dering Harbor. That's the only one that still has. Dering Lord Road as well. Dering Lord Road. Both of those have double-digit number people on there and have been waiting for, I think Dering Lord is somewhere around 10 years and.
Silver.
Dering Harbor was, Dering Harbor is like five years, six years now?
Nothing's that bad.
Yeah, Silver Beach as well is a long one, right? Just for whatever reason, I was thinking, we cleared out WA and WMB so that that doesn't really have a waitlist right now. But yes, Silver Beach also has one that's, I think we just filled a spot that person's been on this since 2013, so. So, you know, it's fair to say maybe 10 years in some circumstances, right? 200 bucks over the course of that time.
I'm just curious what the other board members think about that.
Beau, on page two, okay, it says payment for mooring permit application 225. That's just the initial to get a permit?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, that doesn't, that's not including the annual fee. That's just the permit application.
That includes your first year.
First year.
Right. Regardless of when you apply for the mooring, so I always tell people, don't apply for the mooring until, you know, somewhere around March.
Right.
Because our permit year runs from, you know, March 31st to, or April 1st to March 31st. Whenever you apply for your mooring, initially you pay the 225. That covers you to March 31st of the next March 31st, and then you would be the 150 thereafter.
So basic for the 150, so we're really charging $75 for the initiation as administrative?
Correct, right? If you were to look at it, right?
That's how I'm looking at it.
Right, yep.
Haven't it to $75?
The 150 to 225, right? There's the $75 difference there. It's functionally like the application fee plus the mooring fee, the mooring permit fee.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask this question. How do you feel about the online service that you have with the mooring thing? Could you maybe talk about maybe some of the positive things as well as what you would really wish it could do for you?
So I absolutely despised that system when I first put my hands in it. And then as I've spent time with it, I have come to realize that the system, the complexities and the drawbacks of the system were related to our town's specific requests over periods of time. And so the system really didn't evolve very much where it did in other municipalities. Once we started to adopt and embrace some of those evolutionary processes that they went through over a long period of time, the system became much more user-friendly to everybody. Now, I mean, I use the system daily for all kinds of information. We use it for, you know, contacting people in the event of something's going on in a certain waterway, or we use it for the boat storage permits. So the ease with communicating with people, I think, is probably its greatest, its greatest strength. The automation of the processing, right? With the exception of hiccups, there's hiccups with everything. We largely communicate with all of our applicants electronically now. We send you a notice, we send you a notice 90 days in advance, which is what the town code requires. We send a second notice 30 days in advance if you still have not renewed by that point. And then we send a notice five days before. So we're really trying to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Most of the applicants, again, Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, like to renew online. They just process the renewal there. They still have the option of coming in and paying in person, which is nice. We have, you know, it really doesn't make any difference, you know, time limits, but how you do that. There is a processing fee that people pay, right? The convenience fee for paying with a credit card through the computer, which has been a hiccup with some people don't fully understand, right? So we charge a 150. OLLM collects its $7 fee, and then if you use a credit card, they hit you for $6.50 or something like that. So I wish that there was a better way to design all that or have it be a little clearer. And I've worked with them on making some improvements to sort of like the checkout system that people, the user actually sees. So I'd like to see that. Overall, I don't have many complaints about, you know, how it all works. Once we've identified weaknesses that we are experiencing, they are exceptionally receptive to helping us get through that. And if it's a software-related issue, they have IT people working on it right away, right away. So we, I really don't have anything bad to say about.
Just out of curiosity.
I don't work for them.
When you're underwater, you have a tablet that you have that shows everything that you, first, real time that you know what's going on?
No, not a tablet specifically, but I can access all of it remotely from my phone as the other marine patrol officers can. And we have all different levels of user access, right? So Amber and I are administrators. We have unfettered access to everything, but we can set up any user for any level of access, you know? Waterways Committee, I have them set up so they have some read-only access to certain things. Set up financial access, there's a whole button, there's a lot of tools in there. But yes, I can use it on the phone.
Okay, just curious, not just asking for information only, I think.
So my question that's still on the table is how do you feel about the $20 fee?
For renewals.
For renewals.
Is there any administrative?
Say that again right here.
Waitlist renewals.
Waitlist renewals.
Waitlist renewals.
Yeah, like mooring applications.
How complicated is this waitlist? Is it very complicated? So how did the $20 come about?
Someone off wanted it at the table.
Can we get Bo's opinion on it?
Yeah. What's your opinion, though?
I think the 20 bucks to join is probably reasonable. I think $7 that they have to pay to do their own renewal is probably covering our exposure, right? We, we're trying to make this so that way we don't have to chase people down and wonder, hey, do you still want to be on the list? Did you pay it? That's all being done for us. Will there be some small clerical lift most likely in Amber's office? Absolutely, right? Somebody's going to miss it or can't do it online. But I think we're probably fine with the, just pay the required fee to them and let people, let people just renew for free. Once they've seen.
Yeah, once they've gotten on, then I'm.
Maintain.
Just to maintain your position, it's the $7 for the renewal.
Yeah. Someone paid $200 over the course for 10 years, they don't get anything, just seems.
There needs an adjustment or someone needs help, it's not hard.
Yeah, but it also shouldn't be the town paying for them to stay on the list, you know, they're, we shouldn't be taking on the cost of them to renew. That should be there.
Zero cost.
Exactly. Right, exactly. For us, for the town, for the taxpayer. The taxpayer shouldn't be footing the bill for someone to stay on the list.
So I'm going to strike.
I'll tell that.
Yeah, I, that's what caught my eye, the $20. But so we're talking about, you're feeling that we have that $75 that begin with application, right?
Right, initially.
I don't see the need for, I think it's, you know, we're not supposed to make money out of this, it's supposed to be, right?
That's, that's fine, yep. So we're going to remove the $20 renewal fee.
So it would be just payment.
Just of the online mooring's management fee.
Yeah, so the repayment of the administrative fee.
Yep.
But just because now I'm confused, in order to get on the waitlist, you don't have to submit an actual mooring application, right? Or do.
Now, right, moving forward, that won't be the case. Previously, that was the case, and it created all kinds of headaches.
Right, but I'm saying like now.
You have a check for $225 sitting in the drawer for 10 years.
Yeah. So, but under this, under this current structure, you do not have to submit that application to get on the waitlist.
Correct, you don't submit the application for the mooring itself until the system says, hey, congratulations, it's your turn.
All right.
Fill this out, pay 225, and let's go.
Right, that's what I thought, but I was getting confused.
On the second page here, for clarity, right? I added also at the request of the board, a motor safety certificate requirement, right? So New York State requires any operator of a motor vessel to have a motor safety certificate now, as of this year, regardless of age. It is possible that you could get a mooring for a boat that does not have a motor, that does not require a motor safety certificate, but I think we want all our boaters to have motor safety. It's either way, so let's just make that a condition.
I think that's fine.
So I put that in there at your request, so.
Do we have any questions on this set of procedures from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right, so we can, you can make these, that last name, and we will adopt it at the next town board. Okay. Condon Creek Town Doc Waiting.
Right. So this was basically copy paste, change the words, change the names, right? So in this document, again, the only two changes that I made on the first page here, the first two changes I made on the first page were the same thing, related to $20 to apply plus fees, $20 to renew plus fees. I assume we'll strike the renewal from there as well.
Yes.
And keep it even. Likewise, I add in the last paragraph under assignment criteria, over safety certificate, again, keeping it even. There was no change to the second page of that document. There was some question forwarded to me. There was some question forwarded to me about the age component here, right? And so, I'll just touch on it briefly, because actually, there was an age component on the mooring one as well. The 16-years-old minimum for the moorings is directly related to the town code itself. Town code tells us you can't get a mooring until you're 16-years-old. So, well, I think some people were thinking there's an age requirement to be on a waitlist. I don't think that that's something that needs to be included, or that, maybe I should clarify, that's not what that is. It's, the age requirement applies when the permit is issued. So, if the applicant is not of the specified age, they are not eligible, they cannot get that permit.
Right.
First, you gotta be eligible, and you can get issued. So, 18, 18-years-old at County Creek Dock, I'm not 100% sure why or where 18 came from other than I just didn't think that we would be entering into a dock lease agreement with a minor.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's a lease agreement, yes.
That wait is currently 25 years, so I don't believe that there is any real pressing need to have a age requirement to get on the waitlist. In fact, I encourage people to get on the waitlist soon. A newborn added the other day, so that's good.
Amber.
And again, if they are not of legal age by the time their name is called, and they are not eligible, and they will get skipped over according to this procedure. Stay on the list until they're eligible.
You answered that question, thank you. All right. If the waitlist's not okay, would you please move on? Anyone from the public with questions, come on up.
The citation about having a.
It's your name for the record.
John Cronin, former town engineer. The citation about having a boat or safety certificate, I think it's a great idea, but there are people who don't need that certificate if they have a U.S. Coast Guard Deck Office of license. So, whether you want to alter the wording or make it a blanket requirement that you still need to have a boat or safety certificate, just consider the fact that there is a way for some people to be exempt, and you would have no way to track that unless you require them to present their license.
So, could we just say, we're equivalent, that license?
Yeah. Just line it to there, make some boat or safety requirement or something to that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else side-stomped?
I have the same similar question.
Come on up.
You know what the other thing is, probably, Tom, Tom, probably. I just hit the button. It said, we're applicable. So, if I have a small sailboat without a motor, I don't need a boat or safety certificate. He said, you are not pointing names. They would like us to have one, but that's not what the law mandates. So, should we stick with what the law mandates and not what we feel if we're gonna write this law?
Back to moorings.
May I take their?
Yes, yep. So, we're back to the mooring one.
Motorized vessels, isn't it required, though?
Yes, yes. Does it have a motor? It does, you do not have to have a boat or safety certificate.
Without a motor?
Without a motor.
Got it.
Okay, and you could get a mooring for a dodech, right?
Right.
So, dodech doesn't require a boat or safety certificate, town's boarding act, in this particular circumstance, we would still require that applicant to provide a boat or safety certificate. My position is, I want everybody to have boat or safety certificate, whether they're mandated for the boat that they're currently using or not, I'd like to see everybody have that. We can change it to as applicable. The as applicable section that you're referring to is actually in reference to the vessel registration, right? Because that is as applicable, right? Non-motorized vessels do not need to be registered either, so we can't require a registration for something that doesn't require registration. It's proof of, proof of ownership or registration as applicable.
I think where Tom was going, I mean, I'm not talking for you, Tom, but I think then, what happens with kayaks?
Kayaks don't go on mooring.
Yeah, you can't, right, so.
I'm not saying with moorings, I'm just saying in general, I mean, we have kayak racks and we rent them out, you know, we don't require any boating class for that.
Not currently, no, that's true, it's a great point. I think maybe adding as applicable is simple, that's an easy, easy way to do it.
I was gonna say, what proportion of moorings have non-motorized vessels on it?
Fairly.
So, if we required it, then it would not be a huge, huge population that now has to go out and get the boat or safety certificate.
Correct, right. I, I would be hard-pressed to find a person who is boating in some capacity with or without an engine, who has not voluntarily taken or wants to take that course. But I suppose there's probably somebody who has a dodech who says, I don't need this and I'm not gonna take it, and I want my mooring anyway, if it's possible. So, again, if they're required to have it, we can make them produce it, and if they're not required to have it, we can give them their permit without it. You can add a slip.
Okay. I'm fine with that as applicable. Come on up.
I have no intention of speaking on this, and I do not represent any of the ferry companies. I'm just gonna work out through this. I don't like open beach in rules either, but being a deckhand, there's a lot of ding-dongs on non-motorized boats, and they have the right of way. And considering you can only get here by ferry unless ding-dongs to the harbor. And I also took this dumb course, this great course, it only takes a few hours. So, if it's a requirement, it's not that arduous of something. I do hate all the rules as well, but it does affect, the non-motorized boats affect our everyday life, that's my opinion.
I, I think the more education people have around boating, the better and the safer the waters.
Amazing, because everybody's following the same rules. So, I would always encourage people to get educated and trained on it. You know, I even think it would be prudent for kayakers to know what they should and shouldn't be doing, but that's gonna be a lot to try to do. But I would agree that if you're gonna be on a mooring or on the town dock, you should have some training in boat or safety.
All right, so I'm leaning towards encourage but not mandate. No?
I would just mandate it, it's easier to just, if you want a mooring or you want to be on the dock.
I could go either way, I could go either way.
Just get the training. Be on the water.
If it's simple, then you can always be more.
We can be more strict.
We can always be more restrictive.
We can always be more restrictive.
We can be less restrictive.
Right.
Then I'll retract my argument. I'll make it easy for you guys. Oh, the dating time. That's a good point, Tom, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we're keeping, so we're keeping it, okay.
I would prefer to keep people educated.
You're gonna be on the water, you need to show the rules.
I'm a boat or safety instructor, right? The town hosts many boat or safety. The town, no, I'm just wondering.
It's part of his job.
We offer many, many boat or safety courses in a year, I think I taught six between the mandate and this summer. It's also available online for various fees. We, the town, offers it to our people for free, which is great. So, we're working with the boating public as well, so.
That's a little bit, that's a little bit why I was wondering how many people would be impacted, just because then your classes would be fuller.
They're full enough.
Yes.
I think boat's a safety issue, okay, and you know, when you look at it, you don't like to create rules, and but at the same time, you know, even people who have all these classes doesn't necessarily mean they know what they're doing, okay?
I wrote a ticket to a person I gave the class to this summer. It's a true story.
But I think it's a good starting point.
All right, did I ask the public if there was any further cut? Oh, I didn't ask the Zoom audience on County Creek Town Dock Waiting list procedure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Moving to the last one.
Okay, so, on the agenda, it's listed as County Creek Town Dock Permit Rules and Regulations, but the documents that you have before you is in fact three individual documents, right? Just formatting issue there, just wanna make sure that this is all covering the issuance of permits for the town docks that are listed in the newly adopted, recently adopted Chapter 53, right? Specifically Article 2 of Chapter 53, which deals with town on docks, piers, wharves, etc. So, context, we've issued permits for County Creek Dock for a really long time. We've also issued a single permit for the Town Dock at Dering Harbor for a number of years. Through the dock code change and lots and lots of discussions with Waterways, there was an interest expressed in expanding some off-season use of the Crises Lane bulkhead area, right? We spent a lot of money down there a number of years ago, made it a really, really nice place, it's fantastic. And a number of our working boardmen have identified application as quite helpful to them during certain portions of the year, namely the off-seasons. So, we've worked with them last year, just as sort of an ad hoc trial, make sure that we can actually put boats there, make sure they wouldn't really interfere with anything, it went pretty well, all with the Town Dock code change in the developing stages. Now that's come to fruition, we wanna try to hammer out, again, a unified way of issuing these permits for these locations, right? So, in that revision of Article 2, lots and lots and lots of language got taken out of that code, right? All of the stipulations for who, what, where, when, why was in the code. And so, we removed that from the code, just put that a permit is required, subject to rules and regulations to be adopted by the town board, which these are now. The overwhelming majority in this first page here, the County Creek Town Dock Permit, overwhelming majority of items in there are items that were taken directly out of the old code and put back in here in some sort of logical order so we could follow. There was a couple of changes in there that have been vetted by WMAC and myself and my partners as well, also town clerk. So, we've come up with a document that we believe best represents the rules and regulations for permitting that County Creek Dock. Anybody have any specific questions about that?
Thank you. Just 'cause I haven't dealt with this yet, the right of survivorship.
Yeah, so, WMAC was fairly adamant that there be some changes in right of survivorship to a, to a slip down there. Previously, if I'm not mistaken, the old code allowed for the surviving spouse of a permitee to continue to have that, that spot. So, there. With a 25-plus-year wait and 150, 160 people on there, some interest in encouraging turnover upon death. I felt strongly that it would be worth protecting the few commercial working folks that might be down there, and they came to a decision, or recommendation anyway, that the DEC allows for commercial harvesting permits to be passed down generational to surviving children of commercial fishermen. They thought that perhaps that might be an appropriate model to follow. Seems like a lot of doing for me personally. There's only, I think, three out of 37 vessels down there that could possibly fall into this category, but it is something that potentially helps protect limited working waterfront. So, that's kinda how that got in.
So, if they don't fall under that category of commercial fishermen, then?
Go on.
Go on, okay.
All right. Yeah, right.
Oh, just 'cause I got lost in that. I'm sure it's for commercial operation only.
No, they weren't.
So, so, otherwise, a family could get a dock and it was a slip and it would never come out of the family.
Correct.
Provided that they inherit that commercial permit from the deceased.
No, no, I'm talking about a commercial permit. I have a slip, not a commercial.
You have a slip?
Right.
Then that doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply, so it only applies to commercial.
If the slip holder has a commercial permit from the DEC.
Right.
That can be passed down, and they pass that down.
Right.
Then that surviving heir would be entitled to retain.
And it's only for a slip.
Right, right, right. The other 34 people there do not have. Do not currently have that. If they were to die, their slip would be issued to the next person of our services.
Is our wording in here, the DEC designation form for license reissuance, is that correct?
I believe that's the actual language, I think Bill was pretty specific about that.
Okay, just checking, right. On page three or four, when you get to Dering Harbor, the permit issuance in the code, it's from September 16th through June 14th. So, this says 15th. So, I just wanted to conform it with Code Section 53.5D2.
Under application?
Permit issuance, page three.
Permit issuance. Right, it's 16th, right below it, though.
Right, exactly, I'm just a nit.
There's a clerical error, gotcha.
I do like the change that was made, if you go to, I guess, on page one, the permit issuance. The original draft had this, that no applicant who owns waterfront property could get a slip at the dock. But I do like the change that says, you know, if that waterfront property is improved by a dock in navigable waters, you do not qualify for a slip at the dock. I think that was a good change, because I did have a lot of people who own waterfront who don't have docks, who are like, but I have an opportunity to, you know, put my boat at the dock, so I think that was a good change.
There was also a similar change in going onto the waiting list.
Yeah.
Because, just because you currently own a dock, doesn't mean that in 25 years, when your number is pulled, you may still own that one. So, that was also removed from there to the same rules.
Oh, and the, I know this is, it's related, it's related, okay? The fees that we charge at the town dock, 17 or 18 units, 18 dock spaces, is it correct?
37.
37.
37.
Okay. You're adding all of them together, I guess, right? From Silver Beach to?
No. Just County Creek Dock.
37 there.
There's 37 slips at County Creek Dock alone.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that was.
Yeah.
Okay. I was, my question, my next question was gonna be, okay, I thought it was less than that, that the expense, the fees that are, that are collected, are they adequate to pay for the repairs that are normally done? Like this, you advertise, what, what'd it cost to build, rebuild the dock, water lines, all the rest of that stuff, is that?
So, to the best of my knowledge, the fees collected from County Creek Dock go to W.
Waterways.
Waterways Fund. And to the best of my knowledge, repairs, etc., down there, come out of the DPW's budget. So, I would have to direct you to Ben Lewis on that one. I don't, I don't know, you know, how that works. And perhaps Waterways Fund backfills to help cover some of that, but that's, that's the current structure as far as I, as far as I.
I think it's worthwhile looking at, okay.
That is on the list of things to be discussed in one of our budget work sessions. Amber, Shelby and I are pulling together, we're gonna pull out those lines, revenue lines and expense lines. And Shelby and I are pulling together, we're going to pull out those lines, revenue lines and expense lines, better show it, so that it's more understandable to the board and the community. And we can better plan for accumulating funds, so that if in certain years, we don't use all of the money that's collected in revenues from County Creek Dock, it does accumulate in the fund. And therefore, when there is a big renovation that needs to be done, like a number of years ago, we have funds, we have money available.
You continue.
Okay. Any other questions on the County Creek Dock rules and regulations? If not, then we'll go to the bottom of page four, where there's one word, residency. Then on to page three, which is the Dering Harbor Town Dock.
Right.
Cut. Based, change the names, change the place. The big difference here is this is for off-season use only, right? As Supervisor pointed out, from September 16th to June 14th. That was in the old code. We just pulled it out of there, put it in here. It's exactly the same dates. Historically, there's only ever been one permit issued there. There was a lot of interesting, perhaps increasing that. I don't feel that they came to any consensus on that, so for the time being, one permit perhaps, as far as I know. Not much really going on there. Do they have any questions with it?
Just under the required information, did you want to use a similar language for the commercial fisherman permit? Because right now it says the DEC permit requires the commercial fishermen, whereas back under County Creek, it has County Creek, you had DEC designation form, like?
They're two different.
They're two.
Well, so.
I mean, the right of survivorship is different, this is.
There's no right of survivorship, is there?
No, no, but I'm just talking about, I mean, just conforming language as far as.
I think the right of survivorship language is specific to certain types of commercial permits, I think food fish permit specifically. The commercial permit from DEC that would be would be valid for obtaining a permit here, and in the next one that we're going to talk about, is broader than just a food fish permit, right? It was meant to incorporate more different types of commercial waterfront working. So just as an example, the digger's permit would qualify, right? There's no right of survivorship with a digger's permit.
Thank you for that clarification.
I skipped over the fees already established for County Creek Dock, right? A fee for Dering Harbor Town Dock has been $146, is that my correct question? 146 to 147 dollars for an added time off season period. I don't know why that's that number. It seems like a very unusual number to me, but so be it. Maybe it's the number of days, dollar a day, I don't know. So barring some change in what the town board sets that fee at, I'd imagine the town clerk will continue to issue that permit at that fee. That will come back up in a minute when we move on to the Grace's Lane rules and regulations. If we're ready to just go to that?
Yeah.
I could do that. Grace's Lane rules and regulations, Dickerson Creek is the body of water, so that's what we're, we're thinking to that as. We started off with the template from Dering Harbor Town Dock Permit. Changed the names, changed the place. Likewise, September 16th to June 14th, off-season use only, limited to commercial vessels only as well. So I can turn into a large marina down there. There is no fee established for this particular permit, because it didn't exist until the town code was changed. We have a fee set up for a commercial applicant at one town dock. It would make sense to me that the fee would be similar to that. That's something that the town board needs to establish.
Is there a limit to the number of permits issued here? I noticed two, I believe two vessels were tied up.
Yep, so again, in sort of piloting it, we're trying to see where vessels would fit, make sure there's enough water and not interfering with the police boat coming and going. And so we had identified four potential locations, three of which which had been occupied simultaneously, without any issues to us, without any interference with the use of the public float that's there, right? WMAC was adamant that the public float not be considered for permit location. They want to keep that for transient people, even in the off-season. So we have a spot sort of on either side of that float, and then two spots to the north of where the police boat is. There was some concern about crossing over the wholly town-owned portion of the area and into the jointly owned area with CPF, with County Parks. So, you know, I've worked extensively with County Parks on sort of joint ventures in my other role. It can be somewhat complicated to negotiate what we're trying to accomplish there. So we may want to limit the northward creep, if you will, and perhaps eliminate the northernmost theoretical spot there. I think we might want to see what the demand is, see how that works out. Can always maybe expand and contract as possible, but maybe there is some merit in establishing and in adoption of these not to exceed some number of permits.
So right now you've practically used three, like you've had three vessels?
Yeah, yeah. One of them is further up. So we would ask that person to relocate, provided that they apply for a permit and get it. We'd ask them to relocate to one of the locations, I mean, that was wholly owned by the town and there's no question at all there.
Okay, so there's three locations that are in town property, right? And then that fourth one would be more in county shares.
Fifty-fifty, it's right out there.
Okay, all right. So we could easily say three for sure.
Yeah. And WMAC had a, I produced a map with like theoretical spaces overlaid over top of it, and they had that. So that sort of helped in that discussion coming together. I would recommend, it's probably something that we just handle when the permit's issued, but you know, when you adopt this, maybe not to exceed those number. And then one thing that struck me about this, since this document's been produced, some permit conditions, right? What it doesn't entitle you to.
Right.
Because we don't need it turning into a storage yard down there for having boats. I'm going to use that boat on this permit, right? It's for a boat at a spot to facilitate your coming and going, and that's it.
Right.
No more, no less. So, but I think that's something that can probably be addressed in the, you know, the issuance itself, right? This is what it entitles you to. That's it.
Well, it might be a good idea to have a drawing so that there's no confusion relative to the CPF property.
Yeah, I have, I produced that either to WMAC, yep, for their consideration during all of this.
And that's something that you who issued the permit would check, you know, make sure that it's in the correct location.
Yeah, and the guy who checked.
Exactly. But it might be good to have some of the conditions and restrictions in here for that property, just so that it's in the code when people apply for the permit, they know it's upfront. Oh, I can't run my business off this dock, you know? I think that would be probably good to have codified in some way.
I think it's a surrounding property becomes a vacant space for people to, if you're a commercial operation, next thing you know, you're putting all sorts of things on property. Well, nobody told me I couldn't, right?
Right, so that needs to be.
So we should be, that we're only doing the space and nothing can be on any enjoying or town property.
So I could add into those sections for all of them, really, just another paragraph in there, you know, limitations on use or something to that, you know, name it.
Your use is confined to the size of your boat and where you're tied.
And that's it, right.
That's it. Your boat is.
So I can add those to that, you know, give that to you guys.
Water, no electric.
Right, right.
And no severe gear in, on the property. Makes sense.
Questions from the public on this? Anyone on Zoom? I think we can minor tweaks and recirculate it and we'll put it on for adoption of the town.
Supervisor, before Bo goes, and I'll stick around for him. Can we, is item six, I know I'm out of order. Is that something that Bo was instrumental in working with that task force and, you know, or shoreline access? So I, I just didn't know what the relationship was to Bo in that topic. Is that something you're here for? I didn't know what I needed to do until I looked at the agenda.
And this was something that Thomas was going to take lead on, just because there's been a request to add Har Bay Road.
He wants to stay.
Yeah, we might as well, might as well jump to that one.
It's a couple of years.
Yeah, exactly, yes. So yeah, there's been a request and we did actually get a formal request from Ram Island Association too. I don't know if that got forwarded to Thomas. To add Har Bay Road to the shoreline, you know, the list. So you were looking into, I guess we never formally adopted the shoreline access task force and how we would affect those changes, so. I'll leave it over to you.
Sure, so, yeah, the documents that I have from the shoreline access task force are from, I think, 2021 and 2022. They recommend a number of code changes, definitions to Chapter 36, some stuff where you're trying to make Chapter 37, 36 work together. And then a lot of things on, you know, regulation of whatever you would designate a town landing, you know, this is all stuff I've reviewed in the last few weeks. You guys are so much more familiar. Yeah, so we were looking at, you know, okay, how do you add Middle Har Bay Road, that particular one, to the list? You know, initially it was like, well, we should probably try to adopt the code change that creates those definitions and add it to that list, but that is going to be, once I start working on it, a much larger project. And, you know, the timetable, we were talking about trying to do it, wasn't within a month. It's not realistic, so I think the answer is to, for the purposes of getting Middle Har Bay Road added to the list that the shoreline access task force had put together, is to just do a town board resolution that adds it to that list, and I can do that for the next meeting. And then after that, the board will have to sit down and really look through a lot of the changes to the definitions, I think are going to require debate. A lot of the proposed regulations are going to require, you know, debate amongst board members. So I think that's the better path forward, only path forward, really, as far as getting that on the list, you know, in the next few weeks. So that was what I was going to do, was just add that to, you know, make a resolution, you know. Whereas the shoreline access task force prepared a list of, you know, town landings. Whereas Middle Har Bay Road, I think at the time, was, there was some question, it's the title. That question's been resolved, so we were going to add that, you know, as to the list. So, yeah, that was.
If while we're doing that, we've acquired a number of other waterfront properties since that period of time, so, I mean.
You can update the list.
For me, it's an Excel spreadsheet. I can just add them in there and it's done. Though we haven't looked at the Excel spreadsheet, doesn't really matter, they're in there, they're not in there, but I would just maybe review some of the other town acquisitions in that period of time and include them in the update to shoreline access.
Give us a, for instance, the Liberty property on the First Cloesway? The former White property on South Van Groen?
Right, I just like that.
And that's Cartwright.
Right, Josephson property, right? The Tuttle property.
Right, so those are open for public access.
They are public, right. They are shoreline access points as we had defined them way back then. They're public land that touches the water, that's intended for some sort of public use.
Do you want to send me that list?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'll.
Thomas, can you do, I think a meeting with Bo would probably be worthwhile just to look at that. I'm not trying to complicate it. I think a month is, you know, he's available. Tomorrow, if you wanted to meet, like, we will move forward, we will not hold you up.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, so, but I do think there's some real merit to his involvement in the task force and the work that he's done, and having our marine performance be in unison on this, because that's what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you're right, Jim. I think there has to be a lot more conversation in terms of, you know, motorized vessels and stuff like that. I mean, some of them don't lend themselves to that environment. Kayaks and that are fine, okay? I don't know about motorized vessels.
This is just a list of access points, so.
I know, but there's more, I'm just, we can discuss this forever.
Is Sar Bay Road going to be a town landing?
It is a town-owned landing.
So it's going to be a landing for motorized vessels to launch from?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. So, so no, I think a fire apparatus, you know, all of those other connections to it, so that if we designate it, are we designating a landing? People have an assumption of ability, access points, connection with the highway department, and are they supposed to ram that?
Right, maybe I can refresh your memory just on that element, right? So everything was designated as a shoreline access point. Any public property that touches it's a shoreline access point. Then from there, there were further some categorized into town beaches, town ramps, town landings, which is just a spot maybe you could pull a kayak up to, something like that. Not necessarily that there were restrictions integrated or codified that would prevent somebody from doing one or the other, but the intent behind them was sorted out by their captain.
But that ties this into defining that road into one of those definitions.
Correct, and in the near term, since it didn't have any of those other things, at minimum, we could, you could, like you said, have a resolution and since this has been acquired or the legal status of it has been figured out, we're formally designated a shoreline access point. That's it. And after that, somewhere along the line, further defined.
Because that's the most generic definition.
That's right.
Tom Swornell.
So we'll add all of them to the list, but the categorization beyond shoreline access point will not be defined until a later date. Is that what we're saying?
I think for the purposes of the resolution and moving that forward, yes.
What we're defining is just an access point, not.
It's an access point, correct.
Shoreline access point.
For all of them, just because?
Right, still lies.
Har Bay Road would be the easiest one, because it was formerly a landing, but the other ones we haven't defined, okay. I see a couple of hands up. Kim Nolan?
You're muted. Hi, I'm sorry, I'm overseas. I came in late and I just wanted to know who the speakers from the audience are. I missed that.
Oh, Beau Payne and Chief Reeve.
Oh, okay. Well, then I would just like to say very briefly that the Mid Har Bay Road town landing has been recognized and is in the records as a town landing and it's a public trust property for many, many years, and as a riparian owner on Big Ram Island, that landing is vital to the access of myself and other Gardener's Bay waterfronting properties to their moorings in Cockles Harbor. So it's very important that this be clarified, and I see this happening and I'm thankful to the council people here and the town attorney for clarifying something that has been true already for many, many years and was for some reason omitted from an established. And was for some reason omitted from an established list that has been part of town records for many, many years, surveyed property. The fact that it was somehow omitted is not relevant, but what is important is that this is the very easiest thing to do and doesn't depend on review of anything. It's a simple resolution, which I heard happening when I got on the meeting late and I apologize for that. But I did hear that there's total agreement that this goes back and should not wait for any further investigation, question, or delay. People in the neighborhood have been asking for this for many years now. And as I said, I have a personal interest. It is vital to my access to the mooring, our legally riparian owner mooring in Cockles Harbor. And I think the shoreline access task force understands better than anyone how important those spots are to residents, period. There are some residents who come there to access their boats in that mooring field who are not riparian owners and it's really important to them too. So you have many residents here and many taxpayers wanting a clarification, no change, just a clarification and a confirmation that our town landing that has been there and surveyed for over 25 years is indeed officially on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Pam?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate what Kim just said. Middle Harbey Road is a town landing. There's no question. These other new properties that were purchased that maybe you want to put on the list, you haven't even vetted those. The, the request here was to just admit that Middle Harbey Road is a town landing as shown in town records and put it on the list. This is a list of inventory. It's a list of access points and Middle Harbey Road has always been a town landing. And to, to diminish it to an access point at this stage of the game seems absurd and inappropriate and not legal. So I would just request that the town attorney put together the resolution to get Middle Harbey Road on the list and then these other additional access points that you're discussing can be vetted at another time and not convolute the situation here. This keeps on happening that, that this, this landing has been really such a, what do I want to say? It's like, just such a terrible situation that is simply resolved by a simple resolution, voted on by a full town board next week at the town board work session. And I believe that that's what the Ram Island Association has just asked you to do. I have asked you to do this at least four times now this year, starting in January. And it would be very nice to see this completed by the end of the week next week. Thank you.
It will be on for October 20th. That's, we do not have a work session next week because of the holiday and we have budget meetings in place. And then October 20th is our next town board meeting.
Supervisor, can I just, just comment? And so to both Kim and Pam, it's Jim Reed, Chief Reed. I had no intent of giving you any impression that I was asking for delays or, or, or changing anything. I was just trying to get some clarity. Bo did a ton of work on the shoreline access task force and I saw it on the agenda and I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something. So it's not my impression that the town board is going to delay anything. And we're available at a moment's notice to work with Thomas on anything he needs to do. So if there was a misunderstanding, that was not the intent of this discussion.
I, I appreciate that, Chief. I, I just want to say, you know, the task force worked on the list for over two years and they really did their due diligence on putting it together. The fact that this one town landing didn't make the list, maybe it was a clerical error. Let's just say that. Let's just get it on the list. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But just to clarify, it is a town landing and you guys can use it. You know, it is town owned property that you have access to. So feel free to use Middle Harbey Road. You prevented you from using that area. So. Okay. Come on up. I couldn't hear the question.
Do you have a plan for parking?
Let's state your name for the record. We currently do not. It's typically been the shoulder of the road. There's an area there that's a little wider than other areas, but yeah, you have to come to the podium, please.
So look at that now. There is really no more shoulder. All the beach presses have room back. It's a little bit of a cliff off to the right side. Can't really safely park a car completely off the asphalt. Just throw something else at you.
It's in the final recommendations of the shoreline access task force that was submitted in April of 22. It's approved for parking in that area.
Okay. Next topic is the pharmacy update. So the.
Thank you, Beau.
Health and Wellness Group hosted a community session on Sunday, October 5th. And we had, I'd say just in excess of 70 people who were in attendance there.
Yes, very good to tell.
So it was a nice community turnout. Broke down into small groups to discuss three questions that the Health and Wellness Group had come up with. What are your biggest concerns about the closing of the pharmacy? Of the short-term solutions the town board has arranged at this time? Will this meet your current needs? If not, why? And then lastly, what are you seeking as a long-term solution? And do you have any ideas on how to get there? Just to, I'm not going to go through the entire list. Christina, did that get posted on discussion documents? Okay, get that from Jess. She has summarized what came off of the whiteboard, people's comments at the time, as well as the individual facilitators at each table, what they had written down in the comments section. So I think as far as the biggest concerns, I think it's still, you know, people's emergency situations, last minute prescriptions, things like that. The farm, you know, Psych Harbor Pharmacy has committed, you know, has said that they will, you know, deliver five days a week. Since Sunday, I have talked to the owner of Florio Drugs and they are willing to also do delivery to people's homes and that, you know, it'll be seven days a week if there's a need for someone to have a prescription delivered, you know, on a Sunday or a Saturday. So that has opened up the delivery schedule to seven days. One of the questions about the commitment still needs to be addressed. We'll have to, you know, work on that. I think access to speaking with a pharmacist directly, over the counter, you know, recommendations, things like that. We'll have to sit and work on those. Short-term solutions, you know, concerns about accuracy of deliveries to people's homes and reaching out to Hispanic community. When people need to be driven to pick up prescriptions from the senior center as part of the AAA program, will there be, you know, will there be a strain on drivers for the, you know, senior services? And then for long-term solutions, I think the biggest takeaway is people want a pharmacy on shelter island. So we need to continue to work on that to see what we can do and how to facilitate this. Of all of these ideas, I'd like to have the three liaisons for Health and Wellness. Work with the Health and Wellness Group to see which, you know, like of these concerns, you know, can this be put on the agenda to see what areas, you know, they, what roads and paths they can go down to, to start to address some of these and some of the, you know, like working with, can we find town owned property, you know, to house something for a dispensary that cuts out the model of having to, you know, someone having to lease or buy a property? Because the concern being that the reason independent pharmacies are closing and even Rite Aid is closing is the model's not sustainable. And so we need to work on how we can make it a more financially stable model for shelter island. So that might be something that a couple of town board members get together and start to pursue that in more detail.
Yeah.
So what do you think about that as an approach, as for our takeaway, so that we didn't come up with all of these ideas and questions and concerns and then we don't do anything with it?
We can definitely take it back to the Health and Wellness Committee. They have volunteered the help, spearheaded some of these information gathering kind of sessions and healthless brainstorming. So they're more than, more than happy to dig into this with us. So we can absolutely do that.
Amber, I, you know, I mentioned that I, I don't know what the complaint process is, okay, but I think that I, I would like to see us, I mean, we should, everything, what came out of us at Sunday was everybody really is really angry about the fact that there's been no notes, okay? And I, I think that we should at least respond in some way by issuing a complaint of some type, just even if it's just for here, you know, just for the optics of it, okay, because it's really, it's not okay. Okay, so I, you know, I think I sent.
I was going to say, I thought Thomas, you.
Thomas a note on that, okay. I think that if we could just send a letter representing the town that, you know, that didn't do notice. And, and then there, there were applications that I saw, you know, forms that I think are pretty appropriate, that residents can really send in as well as our town. I think you've probably seen this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, and.
No, sorry, what are those?
These are the. You haven't seen these, okay? You, you mentioned earlier on, Amber, that the property was for lease or for sale?
Yes.
Okay. It, it's interesting because I, obviously you, you've spoken to them and I, it took me a while to get a response from them and from the Soloviev group, okay? They indicated that the property is not for sale. Okay, the only thing they will consider is a lease. And, and in fact, okay, they said that they had multiple people that were looking, pharmacies that were looking at their property. So I, again, I don't, you know, and I didn't even get a direct call back. I got a, a voice tabulated message, okay, from August, okay, that, you know, no, the, that, just to clarify, the property is not for sale.
When did you get that response?
This morning.
Oh, okay, because last week.
Yeah, okay, I'm just, just being, but he did indicate, okay, that there are various pharmacies that are looking, that have reached out and they would consider a lease, okay? But it, it's.
That's new information then, okay? Because I do believe two pharmacies and one investor type was, had been, was going to reach out for purchase options, so. So they pivoted on that. Okay, all right. But we can also begin to look for maybe doing something in a town location in some fashion. Yeah, to open up the possibilities of something else. Okay. All righty.
We'll be following up as a result of our meeting on Sunday, I guess, with more, more meetings or more conferences with the public over, not necessarily just the pharmacy, but the whole thing with the Stony Brook in terms of our doctors and everything else. That, that seemed to be a pretty important thing that came across on, on Sunday, okay? But I think that, I think that, I think that program went really well, okay? And it was interesting that everybody that I sat at the table, they had already gotten their, their prescription drugs at various locations, be either online or with different things. Their concern was really about the emergency, okay, that in case something happens. But it, it, you know, it's hard. This is, it's, it's hard.
Yeah, one of the things I want to do is I'll, I'll take this list at some point and like break it down. Like, okay, who's, who's following up on this? You know, you've been the contact to reach out to some of the politicians higher, you know, at the legislature and the state level. You're, you've reached out to Stony Brook, Benjamin's working with some investor groups. I've been kind of just like.
I never, I never received a letter. I, I got a copy of it, okay? It was interesting how the letter that they sent out, they actually listed referring to other pharmacies that they.
They were required to.
They were required to list.
But there was, there was some conversation and maybe, maybe that there was some donation that was involved. I know there was some mention about this, that the Soloviev family was talking about a donation of something. Is that?
That was in their press release. They never, it was in a press release that they issued that went to Curved or someplace like that. It didn't come to us, but yes, that was mentioned in there.
I left, when I was reaching out, I asked that question, okay, but he didn't respond to me. So I, I resend something out, you know, what, what kind of funding or how, what kind of relief can you offer the town during this period of time? So I, I hopefully will hear something.
Board member reports. Q I met last week. Yeah, they had a payment request. They had, we'll be getting another application for another system. That will be circulated. I can't remember the name on that one. They're continuing to think about and figure out like what they can do on a commercial level to. Figure out sizing, size, you know, size of grant, how to kind of promote commercial entities doing something, how much they would want to try and commit dollar wise to making some, some commercial systems get put in. That was, that was all that I had. And actually it doesn't look like there were any other meetings last week.
I had a Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting that met on Thursday, which was good because we talked about a couple of things. But it, the focus of it is on the community survey, of kind of the health needs, like mental health and social needs of the community. So we're going to reach out to different groups to do kind of group interviews, to get ideas from those different demographics of resources that the town needs to make available to the public. And the intention is to utilize some of our surrounding neighbors and resources that already exist, but make them, advertise them more, get them easily into people's hands. So that is the next step that they're going to be working on. And then eventually there'll be like a community wide survey that goes out. It would be online, so wouldn't really be much cost to the town. And to help them really focus their goals and their energies on, into the areas that town isn't really providing what the community needs and providing, you know, access to resources, links to resources. So that's what they're currently working on. But we also talked a little bit about preparing for the pharmacy talk that was going to be on Sunday and just kind of briefing for that. So that went very well. And then Saturday was the first fall festival that the rec department has held, which I think was a success. It looked like everybody had a lot of fun. It was petting zoo, face painting, glitter art, a whole bunch of other things. So I think that went very well. The rec department did a great job. I think the animals in the petting zoo are the most patient animals in the entire world. But it was very cute.
The only thing I'd like to comment is on our budget meeting on Monday, okay, it was a, there was some question of, we were talking about a, the, a budget item, okay, that, you know, that the town board approved of this, okay, and. And some expenditures, okay? And when things go over the budget, okay? Quite honestly, I'm not aware of it, okay, that when things go over budget, okay? And what was being said, okay, is that because we signed the check, okay, that we endorsed it, okay? So the issue is that by the time we get to the signing of the check, the work has already been done, and it's already been performed, okay? So, it's not, we're not really, and we're not part of that process of when things go over budget. And I think that's something that should change in the future. How we work it out, I don't know, but I'm just, want to clarify because I know there was really a little, there was a little statement that, you know, we approved it, okay? But we didn't approve anything. By the time the town board member signs checks, okay, the purchase order has been done, the work has been completed, and all we have is a check. So the only option you have is not to sign the check, okay? And, but we have nothing to do when budgets go over what is, the expenses exceed what are budgeted, okay? I just want to go clear with that.
Look at trying to implement different procedures.
I mean, with that specific one, because it was on Friday that we had that discussion, right? Not Monday? That was, you know, you were talking about Goat Hill, and that was something that Ken did come in and brief us on multiple times. This is what we're doing, this is how it's going, this is what we're coming up against. So we weren't totally in the dark with that project and how it was going, I mean.
This town board member was never notified.
He came to public meetings and explained what was happening. So it's, you know, I remember him coming to public meetings and explaining, but I, that may be just me, but I thought we had briefings on it.
When we have a plan or a budget item, okay, and it goes over it, okay? It really should be more oversight, okay? And it doesn't mean that it doesn't necessarily have to be done. But when you have something that goes so far over budget, okay? It should be looked at differently, okay? And, but like you said, we should look at it, we should look and see what we can do in the future.
Right, yeah. And the reason Ken came in and did the briefings is because he said we're going over budget. So, we were aware that this was happening, that Goat Hill had become more of a process. So just-
I have never seen a contract for Goat Hill.
There wasn't a contract for Goat Hill.
No, but with all the expenses, all the expenditures there, there was never a single contract that I saw. When you spend, all that work, none of that work required a contract?
We had quotes on different things. Yeah, we had quotes, and on behind the checks. Catherine prepares whether or not she's gotten a verbal quote or she's got written quotes. On the highway, they're very vague.
It wasn't like we hired one contractor, come out and do the whole project. It was like bits and pieces that just added up.
You're absolutely correct. That's exactly why it stands out in my head because we have one contractor with multiple bills adding up to a whole lot of money, okay? And that's, I think we should just, all I'm saying is we just need to do more due diligence when we have things that go over budget like that. That's all.
We need a motion to adjourn the work session to go into a special meeting. I make motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you would, I'll give it to you. In fact, Gordon, if you could sign that. And we have one resolution, so sure, okay.
Whereas the Shelter Island 5K Fall Run Walk have requested permission to hold the annual 5K Run Walk on Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 35 Shore Road. And whereas the required document and fees have been submitted, and whereas pursuant to Section 33-2B2, the town board has determined that the proposed run walk will benefit the town, and no fees will be required for police and highway costs associated with the event. And whereas the applicant has requested an exemption from the noise ordinance, and whereas the police department has responded that they are prepared to assist with this event as they have done in the past, and whereas the superintendent of highways responded that if there are any markings on the street, they must be washable, and any signage removed immediately after the race, and the highway department will coordinate any details with the racing committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board does hereby approve said event. So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, I would like a motion to close the special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then now we're back in the work session. So now I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of an employee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.